Some type of land use regulations for the Town or Scrivva. Some of you might be in favor of it, some of you might be opposed to it. The whole idea tonight and a series of public engagement meetings is to, in fact, gauge your interests. What are your concerns? What are you in favor of? What are you opposed to? That's what we're here tonight to do, to listen. We have hired, the town has hired professional consultants, LaBella Associates, who have a wide range of experience in land use planning throughout the state. They've become highly recommended. We have John Duritz and Katie Powers from LaBella. They're going to give you a presentation tonight. Also here with us tonight is Luke Marzata from the Oswego County Planning Department. There are members of the Town Board, there are members of the Zoning Review Commission here. We're here to listen, we're here to learn collectively. There's a number of questions that are up on the board and the intention is to get through each one of those, either through the folks here at LaBella, the county, or through the town. So without further hesitation, I'm going to turn this program over to John. I don't know if you're going to go over ground rules or not, but primarily, okay, I'll let John, it's John's show from this point forward, but we're, this is the first of a series of public engagement meetings. Next one is going to be held for Scrivva seniors on the 15th of September, and then another larger public engagement meeting like this, right here, same time, on September 18th? 18th. So again, this is John Duritz from LaBella and I appreciate your time and attention tonight and thanks again for coming.
Thanks, I appreciate it. Hi folks, good evening. As Kevin said, my name is John Duritz. I'm a senior planner with LaBella Associates. I'm in Syracuse and the town has looked to us for some insight, support on introducing zoning to the community. We're not here to make any decisions, we're not here to make any determination on how, if, it's going to roll out. All we're here is to show you what zoning is, how it can be used, and the different kind of subject areas that it touches on. When you sign in, we asked you to put up any questions that you may have on the board right there. If there's some that kind of come to you while I'm speaking, whoever else is speaking, please write them down, put them on there. That's our written record and then I can also use that to kind of go through all of them, organize my thoughts, organize the questions, and I'll answer them at the end of my presentation. Quick housekeeping things, I presume everyone knows where the entrance next is, we came through that. Bathrooms are just over here, if at any time you need to go, no hall pass is required. We're going to do a quick presentation and then there are some boards behind you, towards the back of the room. If you have any, want to have any separate sidebar conversations, ask me any questions about anything zoning related, I'll be happy to take those on following the presentation. So here's a bit of an agenda for the presentation this evening. Also I have Kate Powers over there, Kevin introduced, she's going to be helping me out with any other questions. The both of us, we're kind of the zoning, the zoning people, if you will, at LaBella in this part of the state. So we have a variety of experiences working with zoning, working with communities of all shapes and sizes. So please let us know if you have any questions down the road. We're talking about, already talked about introduction and purpose of the meeting. We're talking about the Z-word. We're going to talk about what zoning is and what it isn't, how it is a spectrum, and then the process of how a municipality would actually go about creating, implementing, approving, and zoning code. So really, as Kevin indicated, the purpose of this meeting is that the Town of Scrivva is exploring methods of managing land use and development, and one of the most common tools to do that is through zoning. This is, you'll hear me refer to this a couple times tonight and probably for many years to come. James A. Coon prepared a local government technical series, which is publicly accessible information. They're all just write-ups, they're technical summaries of what we do as planners, whether it's comprehensive planning, whether it's site time review, and whether it's zoning. So this is a really tight definition that a lot of us refer to all the time when we're asked, you know, what is zoning fundamentally? So zoning regulates the use of land, the density of land use, and the siting of development. Zoning is a land use technique that can be used to implement a municipality's comprehensive plan. So the Town of Scrivva does have a comprehensive plan. It was recently updated by a coworker of ours who was, named Hartley, you may have seen her at a few meetings, or filled out a survey that she ran, I think this would have been two or three years ago that she did that, so we're going to talk about it a little bit So zoning can be used to do many things, and I understand generally, sometimes there are some misconceptions about what zoning is, or kind of the limits of what zoning can or cannot do. So number one, zoning can be amended or revised. It's not something that's written in stone or a Sharpie and it's something that can be figured out. We know that it's not a perfect tool in every situation. That's why there's mechanisms or levers that allow us to change it. If there's something not working with a definition of something, or if there's something not working with a specific land use regulation as it may relate to lot size, those things can all be changed, whether that's permanently, or whether that's on a one-off basis. That's why we have our zoning boards, our planning boards, to help us make those decisions. Zoning is required to unlock funding opportunities. So this one relates to our friends at the Department of State. There are lots of funding opportunities out there for municipalities to do municipal projects, whether that's funding for new community projects, whether that's funding for new planning studies, like something like a transportation master plan, a recreation master plan, a housing study, all those sorts of things. More often than not, one of the big questions on those forms is, does a municipality have zoning? Yes or no? That, a competitive application, generally municipalities that are successful have zoning. Zoning is also an effective tool for managing and directing growth. What does that mean? That means if you have a developer coming to town looking to, and this is hypothetical, a 50-acre subdivision with, you know, many single-family houses. Right in the absence of zoning, there's not a lot of teeth to point to, to tell or ask a developer where that can or cannot go. While a land use plan, in a comprehensive plan, can offer some of that direction, it doesn't have the same statutory authority as zoning does. So that's what we mean when we say manage and direct growth. Also relates to density. So as the definition I showed a couple slides ago, density is how many units per acre. So zoning helps determine or guide where a certain density is permitted and where other densities are not. Zoning also helps minimize land use conflicts. Put a very low-hanging fruit example up here, keeping a factory away from a residential area. In the absence of zoning, land uses, conflicting land uses can kind of occur relatively, you know, ad hoc. So when you have zoning, it clearly identifies what uses are permitted where. That helps curb that. Couple other things on this side. So this is what zoning is not, or does not. It does not apply retroactively. That means that if tomorrow morning, just hypothetically, Scrivva passed a zoning code tomorrow morning, nobody would have to take any action as a result of that. It's simply in place and would apply to new development. So that's what I'm saying, if a zoning code is passed tomorrow morning, then the developer who's trying to put together 50 lots for a single-family development, he'd have to play by the rules that are passed tomorrow, and it works sort of for future, for future development. There's also a term that some folks may have heard, legal non-conforming uses, or sometimes uses are grandfathered in. Those are the same thing. That means that a use that is existing right now can continue to occur once the zoning is passed, even if it may not be outright permitted, that's fine, that can still happen. And that kind of leads to my second point, zoning does not prevent landowners from continuing with existing operations. So that speaks to that legal non-conforming slash grandfathering sort of, sort of use or perspective. Zoning does not require or result in action from landowners. So as I said, it could be passed tomorrow, there would be no action required, nobody would be knocking on your door, so to speak, to move your house closer to the road, nobody would be asking you to wall-in maybe a structure that is currently without walls, as a result of passing a code. That doesn't happen. And then lastly, zoning is not perfect. As I kind of said initially, we understand that, that's the name of the game, no zoning code is going to be perfect, it's just, it is impossible. So there are tools like area variances, use variances, or a full rezoning that can allow some flexibility, very much on a case-by-case basis. From administrative and enforcement perspective, pardon me, now there are a couple questions about this. Zoning really helps standardize a development or reprocess. So that means that within the code, there are clear articulated steps for how an application is reviewed by staff, and where that review goes interdepartmentally, instead of having maybe, you know, depending on who, and I'm not saying this is Scrivva by any means, but you know, we work in other communities where it depends kind of who's in the office at the time of reviewing the application, what level of scrutiny is applied to it. A zoning code standardizes that. So every developer is treated the same way, every developer's got to play by the same rules, developer, property owner, what have you. Zoning, again, from an administrative and enforcement perspective, provides some certainty to current and future landowners about what can be developed where. So tying back to the future growth and land use, that point really is important to note. There was a question on the board about Micron and what specifically does that mean? That, I want to talk to that person because I'd like to chat a little bit more about the intent of the question, but it provides that certainty to people who may want to live in a community, or build a house in a community, what they can expect down the road in terms of what's going to be located where. Zoning also increases transparency in planning of land use decisions because A, it's a public document, anybody can look at it, B, it's what zoning Board of Appeals members make their decisions with, and it's also informed by the comprehensive plan. So the comprehensive plan will lay the groundwork, it will lay the foundation for how zoning is applied in a community with regards to land uses, with regards to maybe density if it was a really robustly and quickly developing community, but zoning is, it does, it standardizes, everyone's playing by the same rules, and that is, and it results in a transparent process. Because zoning meetings are also public. The zoning spectrum. So some folks may be very familiar with, I don't know, who's looked at a zoning ordinance? Hands up, who's looked at an ordinance before for zoning? A couple, a couple people, okay, good. So we know that, for those who haven't, they can look very different depending on what community you're in. They can be, I have bigger images than next slide, so bear with me on that, but they can be very technical, they can be, they can be a table with x's and some numbers, they can have something that's just a land use map, which is like this, or they can have just maybe pages of words. They can look very different depending on what the community wants, and what the capacity of staff is to actually enforce and review those things. Fundamentally, there's two parts to a zoning code, that's a land use map, like this, and there's text that, I don't want to say backs it up, but it supports it. The land use map shows where certain districts are applied, and then the text describes what is permitted, what sort of development occurs within those colors on the map. So a map, AKA a schedule, I use those terms interchangeably, so just if a schedule slips out, it's the same thing as a map. The text also outlines things like definitions, uses, where buildings can be sited, of course, the development and review process, which is pretty important. I know there's a site review law that the municipality currently has, and I'll answer that question because that relates to this as well, and that's on the board, so I'll get to that after. But really, what the takeaway message is, is that zoning codes can range in their length, in their level of detail, and their complexity. You can have codes that are hundreds of pages long, or you can have codes that are a dozen pages long. It really depends. So here's the blown-up version of what I showed earlier. This is also the city of Oswego. I just, I picked this just because it's geographically close, that's the only reason. Here we have a table of bulk requirements, which, you can come look at this after, it's all, it's all good. We have the names of the zones on the left-hand side, and then basically the numbers that tell the developer where that, where that building is going to go on that, on that lot. And then here we have the table of uses, which shows all of the districts at the top, and all of the uses, and where those uses are permitted in the municipality. So I've broken this up into, this is also at the back, a much more condensed version, so I encourage you to take a look at that as well. There's the zoning spectrum, we have the higher-touch zoning code, which is generally used in more urban areas, those are the ones that are probably going to be a lot longer, they're probably going to have some images, some graphics showing you what they want things to look like. They may have more zoning districts, and there's going to be a strong emphasis placed on the building form and design. That means there's going to be a strong emphasis placed on what the building looks like, and how, and it's massive. So how big is it, what's its relationship to the street, to the yard, that sort of thing. Examples, Syracuse, Buffalo, Albany, major, larger cities, they're going to have a higher-touch zoning code. You may have heard the term form-based code, that's that, very designed, very architecturally sort of thing. For lower-touch zoning codes, we see these a lot, we work with a lot of smaller communities, Kate and I both, all over New York. These are generally less prescriptive, pardon me. They place more emphasis on the land uses and the location rather than form and design. And we see these in Oswego, Parrish, and Manano. There's more often than not, fewer zoning districts because there's just, it's just a simpler way to manage land uses. Some zone, some zoning codes will have a dozen districts, and that's a why, that's all for anyone, for any size of municipality. So generally, the fewer the better, and also you have the fewer zoning districts, that means you have more flexibility and more latitude of what you can do, or what's permitted in any, into any of those zones. And again, this is very much a spectrum. So, you know, on one side, you can have something that is kind of in the middle that harmonizes the two approaches. It's a community-driven process, not only from the community, the members of the public, like you folks who are here this evening, but also the staff. What can the staff reasonably enforce on? What makes the most sense, what's the easiest? So zoning in Scrivva, turning it inwards, focusing to the municipality, it can be used to achieve many of the goals and the objectives described in Scrivva's current comprehensive plan. So I put these right in the comprehensive plan, it's a public document, it's available online, it kind of shows the homework of how it was made, there's the survey that was done, there's the older plan, the years are escaping me, so I apologize for that, but there's, I think there's three iterations of the comprehensive plan available on the municipality's website. Some of the goals from the update, the newest version, include managing residential density while respecting rural character, monitoring and regulating short-term rentals, facilitating mobile home management, strengthening code enforcement, maintaining cleanliness across the community, and protecting agricultural land and open spaces. Zoning is a very effective tool to achieve all of these things. From managing residential, residential density while respecting rural character, zoning can be used to distinguish what's a residential lot versus what's an purely agricultural lot, and apply respective standards. We see zoning used very frequently to monitor and regulate short-term rentals. So where can those, I'll say, I'll always say STRs, STR short-term rental, like Airbnb, where can those go in the community? How, you know, long can they operate? Facilitating mobile home management, the zoning, a zoning code allows for things like landscaping requirements. So if there's a certain use, maybe it has to be screened, maybe they, maybe the mobile homes need to be a certain distance away from each other, that's where zoning comes in. Strengthening code enforcement, this one is very important, because like I was saying earlier, a clear articulated, easy-to-follow zoning code makes an enforcement person's job a lot easier. If you can clearly point to why a decision was made, you can clearly point to why, you know, this permit was issued, why a fairness is required, why something doesn't align with the zoning code, you can point to that, saves a ton of work. Maintaining cleanliness across the community, this, I think there was notable that as well on the board. Screening property maintenance standards, often found in zoning codes. Last, protecting agricultural land and open spaces, agricultural districts, zoning works to implement those things. So if agricultural district is emphasizing only agriculture in a certain geography, then the zoning code is going to say, only permitted uses in this space are agriculture, period. It's, you can't debate that when it's not clear. Same applies to open spaces, things like, you know, park spaces, green spaces, naturalized areas, those kind of open spaces. And of course, it's a state requirement that all land use regulations, including zoning, they must be in accordance with the town's comprehensive plan. So if the town's comprehensive plan says go left, you have to go left in the code, you can't go right, that's not how it works, which also helps with the transparency process and the accountability process, because if you're doing the comprehensive plan and the community is going in one direction through the comprehensive plan, the zoning code has to go the same way. There's no opportunity to veer off from that. Zoning in Scrivva continued, so we received the County of Oswego's Housing Assessment and Development Strategy. Housing's an important issue everywhere, period. Zoning is identified in, throughout that document, as a way to help move the needle on those goals and recommendations. For instance, create clear street line pathways for housing developers to follow through the zoning and permitting process, to reduce the development timeline, particularly in areas targeted for more extensive growth. Continue to engage with municipalities to understand the types of housing best suited to each community, identify if zoning, comprehensive planning, planning or permitting processes, or other policy updates are needed to facilitate that development. So that is really a fancy way of saying, is the, is the groundwork there from a paper, on paper, to see how the development happen in a community? Lastly, we have protect urban spaces and limit urban sprawl by providing technical support to municipalities to adopt zoning regulations that allow for. Relist off housing types, your multifamily, mixed-use, accessory growing units, tiny homes, increased density. Consider incentives such as density bonuses, expediting permitting, tax relief, direct subsidies, or fee reductions. Those are all incentives to get development to happen. You build those into a code, and then they're administered through that. The types of housing best suited to each community, that is something that's often identified in a comprehensive plan. So if a community expresses to their municipality that they only, that they really want to see only, you know, max of three to four stories in a particular area, then that's what the code's going to say. So how do you make a zoning code? There's, we're going to talk about my friend James Coon again here, he's got seven or seven steps. There's, that's also on the board back there, as well as a longer version that kind of says the same thing. How do we make a zoning code? So, there's creation of the zoning commission is number one. You've got to have a zoning commission to have the checks and balances, to identify the issues, to help provide insight into the communities, what they want to see. You want to do your homework, you want to identify what are the land uses, what are the, where's the opportunities, what are the challenges to seeing development or mitigating land use conflicts in a community? You want to do your comprehensive plan and your environmental assessment, so that's making sure that you're looking at those documents to make sure you're on the right path. Performance of the local governing board, this is where you take it, you would take the code, the draft, following extensive public consultation, following extensive due diligence and writing of the code and vetting with the community. When that's completed, you take that to your local governing board, have a notice of public hearing, and then you refer it to the county, you join the municipalities, so they can provide some insight and offer their comments, and then you follow some, you know, maybe the dryer, the dryer pieces, you enact it, it's entered into the minutes, and then it's published, posted, and filed. Very, that's a very like quick snapshot of how you make a code. Happy to talk about that in more detail afterwards. This is a map of the land uses that our friends at the county provided, so I'm going to leave this up here. There's a lot of different colors kind of all over the place. The yellow or the gold is residential, and the purple here is public services, gray is industrial, and then the darker gray is vacant land. This is something that we use to inform our zoning code. So if this, and this is all based on tax assessment data, so when the assessor goes out, evaluates a property, they're looking at what is the property currently used as. That's all public information, by the way, the codes that are assigned are all public, you can look at, you know, what does industrial mean as a land use assessment, that's all widely available. We look at this, and then obviously we want the zoning to, as best it can, match up with this, so that we're not restricting uses, so we're not taking away the existing uses from continuing to occur. A zoning map would maybe be a little bit more consistent and not have so many, not be so checkerboarding, if you will, but this is a key piece in making that determination. So that's it for the presentation, I'm going to grab the board over here and go to some Okay, do you have a comprehensive plan available for review? Yes, as I said, it's available on the town's website. If you want it emailed to you, you can come find me, I'll give you my card, reach out to me, and I'll send it to you, whoever wrote that, or anybody else. And like I said, there's, there was a recent update that's also available, there's some community, community survey data that's up there as well, so have a look at that. How will zoning affect ag districts? Great question. Zoning is going to reinforce the directions that the ag districts have outlined. So if the ag districts are very prescriptive in terms of what agricultural uses are permitted or encouraged, we want the zoning to support that, or implement that. Why do we need zoning if there's a site plan review process already in place? Very good question. The site plan review process for the town is a little bit dated, it's also not as robust as what I've described here in terms of future growth and land use planning. This, the site plan review process is a little bit more reactive than it is proactive. You can't, you have a development walking in the north, you take it through the site plan review process, kind of, one, a case-by-case, whereas the zoning gives a little bit more certainty, and a little more kind of future thinking to the development of the community. Likely, well, I shouldn't say likely, but more often than not, we see a site time review, if that law already exists in a community, that would help inform the writing of the code. We would probably take that and repackage it and fit it into the code as far as, when it comes to site plan review, that's a very common approach. What specifically is the concern with Micron? I don't, I don't know what, in Scrivva's context, I can speak, you know, very generally, being a central New York resident and planner in the community, and from what I've heard anecdotally, at a high level, I think many communities are worried about just not being prepared for the potential rapid increase of population, increases, usage of infrastructure, roads, servicing, all that sort of stuff. Again, if you want to talk about that more, come find me, happy to talk about that. What are the key objectives on, of implementing zoning for Scrivva? That's a good question. I think we want to make sure that it's a transparent and public process, probably the two very important things, and we want to make sure that it meets the needs of the community, and it's not imposing anything that the community may not want. It's got to be tailored, has to be tailored, to the capacity of the, of the staff as well. So if we have a codes person, I'm speaking hypothetically, who's in the office, maybe three days a week, because that happens a lot in many communities, we obviously want a very tight, easy-to-follow, sustained zoning code. We obviously want a very tight, easy to follow, sustained zoning code that someone can point at and say, this is, here's the decision, here's why we got to this point. So I wanna make sure that it meets the capacity of Scriba. And if, if Kevin wants to add any more to that, what are the key objectives of implementing zoning for Scriba? Or if I did a good job, you can give me the thumbs up. Great, thanks. Moving on, why do we need, why do we need zoning? I kinda touched on that throughout the, throughout the presentation. Is it a need? I mean, it helps a lot with many different things. What is the guarantee that the city of Oswego is not going to take this over? I don't know if this means, like, this is the zoning code or the process. I'm happy to talk about that though, whoever wrote that question can come see me. And then what mechanism do we have in place to deter the good old boys club? Well, so, great question, you're not alone. So like I was kinda saying before, zoning is a transparent public process because the code is standardized, it's written into law, you have to follow it. I think that can appease and eliminate, mitigate many of the concerns people have of decisions being made behind closed doors that are private or in camera, whatever the fancy word you wanna call it, that, you know, why did that person get ahead? Or why that person's permit get approved before mine? Zoning helps clear the air on that one, for sure. Neighbor piled with garbage, bringing in rodents and feral animals. Yikes. So in the zoning code, as far as what can be done about that, there would be property maintenance standards incorporated that could potentially address or alleviate some of that. But that certainly sounds like a code enforcement issue. Dog running loose and attacking me on my property and my dogs. Again, definitely a code concern. Zoning doesn't necessarily get into keeping dogs, like domestic animals or like your own personal animals, caged to a degree. That's kind of a gray area, and would like to talk to that person as well. And give me, get some insight from Kevin as well, because he's an attorney, and he can help me answer some of those more technical questions. How do you report a neighbor with a disgusting yard unkept? That's an enforcement issue. That sounds like a complaint you would wanna make. Generally complaints are anonymous, kept confidential. And when, when there's a code to point to and say, well, you know, this grass is as tall as me, I'm six-two, and that grass is six-two, way too tall. To look at the code and landscaping, property maintenance requirements and say, well, you know, it should only be, or it's only supposed to be, you know, no greater than however many inches. That gives you some teeth in following up on enforcement complaints as well. So there's that one. How can you charge a homeowner, change a homeowner, who they can have on their property? We don't people zone, so we're not looking to tell a property or who they can have on their property. There may be some more to this, so if somebody wants to come see me or kid afterwards, we can talk about that. Can issues like noise, traffic, or environmental impact be addressed by target ordinance's fair permitting and direct enforcement? Yeah, absolutely. What that looks like, or how, or how heavy the approach is, varies very much. But we trap, you know, the zoning at its core is to, or historically, you know, started as a public safety, health tool to prevent, you know, wells from getting contaminated. So it does still have that, that fundamental public health, public safety factor in it. So again, the answer is yes, it can be addressed through zoning. It would just depend on the level of action desire. Shouldn't we allow the people in this town to vote for themselves on everyone zoning in our town? Great question. So I'm here today to present to you what zoning is, how it can be used, how it would help the town achieve some of its goals. In the event that there's a public hearing, I don't have a crystal ball doubt in the future, and zoning is on the table, I think that'd be the time and place to do it. Zoning takes our property rights away, raises costs for families, enhances control over land to the government regulators to have the people who live here. I respectfully disagree to a lot of this. Property rights aren't necessarily removed, you can still continue to use your property as you have been. That doesn't change. Raises cost for families. Again, there's more to that, I maybe, I'm missing the nuance there. Enhances control over our lands to the government regulators to have the people who live here. While zoning provides a coordinated approach to managing land uses where they can occur in the community, it's not necessarily repealing or removing control from the people that live here. Will there be a meeting in the near future that will allow people who live in this town to speak? Yeah, I think there, there certainly would be. Whether it's at a public hearing, and also we can chat after this. Once zoning is passed, isn't it extremely rare and almost impossible to reverse? Generally, yeah, once it's passed, you don't necessarily, you don't see it being repealed entirely. You see tweaks being made to it to improve it. In zoning or land use hearings, isn't it standard to let us to stand, speak up, identify ourselves, and speak on the record? This isn't a hearing, so this is a public information session in open house to answer questions and talk to the community. Are posted notes a tactic used to limit public comments and reduce accountability? No, we're answering the question as we're going through it. And as I expressed many times, I'm happy to take conversations and questions following the presentation. So, there we go. That is all the questions. If folks want to have a look at the land use map here, have a look at, oh yeah, another one. Have a look at the boards behind there, certainly can. Does zoning take away the right of a landowner to whatever they want with their own property? That is a great question, and I think some people like to use this question and maybe, whatever they want is a very big statement. If I own property and I'm living there as a resident in a single family dwelling, and there's a bunch of single family dwellings around me, I don't know if I would necessarily wanna put up a fairground or something really intrusive into the community. So, I think it's a bit of a, you've kinda looked at it a couple different ways. But I would argue to say whatever they want with their own property, would have to put a little bit of parameters around that. And I'm happy to talk to you after this, about that one. All right, that's it for me. Again, like I said, you wanna have further follow-up conversation, happy to talk to you. There's more sticky notes, there's some boards in the back. But that's, that concludes my portion. Is there anything else, Kevin?
Well, I, I know that Luke is here from the county planning department. I think he had a few things he wanted to say. And I, I do think that the intention here is to, you know, you've heard the presentation, but you certainly, it may have raised questions. And, and we're here to listen to those questions and attempt to answer them. And again, this is by no means a one and done presentation, there's multiple presentations. But, you know, this is the kickoff of, of this process, and, and we're certainly here to listen. But again, I, I don't wanna put you on the spot, Luke, but I know he's prepared some things. Again, Luke is principally responsible for this map, and I wanna give him a lot of props for it. This, you can't, can't see it real, real well here, but if you look at it, this does represent every single parcel of land in the town of Scriba. There's 3,102 individual parcels as reported in the county clerk's office and established under the real property tax department. And so each one, as John had explained, each one of those parcels has been assigned a property classification code by the assessor and the county's assessing unit. And those are residential, they're commercial, they're industrial, they're agricultural, they're vacant. And so what Luke was able to do is take each one of those properties, match up the property classification code, and then color code it and place it on this map. And so this is the organic development of the town of Scriba over the last several decades that these records have been being tracked. So you've got, the, the purple there is primarily the nuclear power plants and the, the power lines, right? If you can see it from here. The, the gray areas where Novellus and Scythe are, that's, that's the industrial zones. The yellow, as John pointed out, is residential. And there's different shades, and I encourage anyone to, to take a look at that. I believe if it's not available already, it will be up on the town's website as well, so you can actually take a look at it. And, and when you, when you get right into it, you'll see every one of your parcels, you know, is, is outlined. So again, I hope I didn't steal your thunder, Luke, but I wanted to give Luke a lot of props because this was done, this was like a thought I had, and I said, hey Luke, can you do that? He's like, yeah, give me a little bit and I'll get back to you. I didn't realize it was gonna be the end of the day that I asked him. But that's the capabilities the county has, and Luke's really, what's that?
Can I get left up for it to look at it?
Yeah, I think, I think the intention is for John to leave it up. And like I said, we're gonna have it available on the website. And when you, when you really zoom in on it, you'll see your, your individual parcel already be identified.
Kevin, when all is said and done, do the townspeople get to vote whether we have zoning or not?
I don't want everyone, I don't want everyone to crank their necks here, so let me, let me address that. This is, this is part of the say. The zoning, under New York state law, this is not a Scriba law, this is not an Oswego county law. Under New York state law, zoning, the development of zoning is not subject to a public vote or referendum. So, what?
So you guys can just walk all over us?
Oh no, not at all. It's all part of the process. It's, there's public hearings, there's, there's public engagement. This is the first of many meetings and multiple months of work, if it is to come to fruition. And as John had pointed out, part of the process allows the public's input in the transparent and open process of, of developing zoning, right? So, the, the law, hold on, hold on, hold on, let me just explain. The, the law of New York state does not allow for a public referendum on this particular issue. It, it just, it just doesn't.
So you're gonna tax us to have people stay on our property, whether or not their family and they're camping for a weekend on our property? That is not right, and I'm sorry.
You, you, you're, you're, you've been misinformed on that issue. This is not, has nothing to do with campgrounds and taxing people and...
Well, that's what we got.
That's, that, you got that from some other source that was not produced by the town of Scriba. It may have had to...
Because we were basically saying we were gonna, we'd have to pay for a permit to even camp on our own property, and I'm like, wait a minute, we already paid land taxes, why are we getting taxed to have family come and stay with us on a weekend?
This has nothing to do with that. Whoever put that out was, was doing it intentionally to misrepresent and misinform and to get you stirred up, and it, and it worked, didn't it?
Well, I'm sure it worked with a lot of us.
Right. So it was a disingenuous attempt to stir up public emotion over this issue. And, you know, we're here to educate, inform...
What is the actual intent?
The intent of zoning?
No, the actual intent behind whatever this propaganda is that they put out.
You'd have to ask that person. Maybe that person's here.
It was on Scriba's town board.
It was not, no, it wasn't. It wasn't. It was intentionally designed to make it look like it came from the town of Scriba, but it did not come from the town of Scriba. It didn't even come from a resident of the town of Scriba.
Okay.
Why didn't we just say who it's from?
I don't know.
I can't prove it, so don't say.
I, I wouldn't, I, I can't say who it's from, but maybe you, you could, you could ask that person.
So why all of a sudden now, I've lived here 61 years of my life, and we've never had any zoning? Why now?
Well, we've...
We tried that back in 1990.
Yep, they tried it.
There's, there's been, there's been, there wasn't a vote.
Yeah, so who was the vote?
Well, it was a vote.
It was a vote to see if the land was only in this town.
It may have been a straw vote, but it wasn't an official vote. I'm just telling you what the law is right now. There's no public referendum. It's a public process that ultimately is up to the town board to decide. But why now, you ask? Again, some of this is driven by development from the outside, Micron and, and other, really, we're talking about another nuclear power plant. When you attend these meetings and you read about the impact of Micron, and we can all say, well, is that really gonna happen or not? More likely, some form or vision of it's going to happen than not, right? And just for the sake of argument, if the entire project, what Micron's proposed, happens in four separate phases over the course of the next 15 to 20 years, this area, central New York, and it's identified as five regions, including Oswego County, is going to see a mushrooming of population, a housing boom, a business expansion. Those folks have to come somewhere, they come from outside and they're here. So you think about it. If there's 40,000 to 50,000 individual workers between Micron, which is about 9,000 to 10,000 employees, and 40,000 more support jobs, right? They're all bringing in, again statistically, three to four people for every worker, right? So if you got 50,000, that's all of a sudden 100,000 to 200,000 people more in this area than there is today. The point is, if communities don't plan to, to, to develop in a way that they want to develop, they're going to be planned, they're not gonna have any control over that. And so zoning is an effort, it's a, it's a way for the community to say, you know what? This is how we want our community to, to, to look and to feel. That's really what is driving this in today, you know, in today's real world. Is zoning a perfect, a perfect thing? No. Is it gonna solve every problem? Absolutely not, I could tell you that right now. But, does it provide some level of local control over how your town is to develop in the future? Yes, it does. And like I said, it's not perfect, but the alternative, when you have nothing, you can have a crematorium next to a residential development. You can have a junkyard next to a subdivision of, of nice homes. You can have a lot of different mishmash that maybe isn't intended that, that you wouldn't want next to your, your home. And so this is an effort to address some of those issues. Let me, let me, before, I know there's a lot of questions, and I'm here to stay all night, but I do wanna give Luke an opportunity, because he's, he's here on his, you know, on his own, and not necessarily part of this, but, but the county is an active partner in, in the development of, of zoning and land use planning. So let me, let me have Luke say a few words, and then we'll, we'll continue to open this up for questions.
So my name's Luke Azada, I'm an associate plan on the real county. I've been up here for, going on three to four years. My focus is in land use, so no secret, I am pro zoning. But I just wanna kinda make things clear about what the county stance is on this whole process. So at the end of the day, we're gonna enforce what you want out of your community. We're not gonna tell you what to do, we're gonna enforce your, your rules. So if you want zoning, we're happy to facilitate that. If you don't work on zoning, that's okay as well. There are a lot of benefits to zoning. John mentioned a number of them, Kevin mentioned a number of them as well. One thing I wanted to point out, and also it, it maintains and preserves your property value. So there's a financial incentive for every landowner for zoning. I can give you a real world example, I'm not gonna tell you where it happened, I'm not gonna give any names. But I dealt with a site plan review that resulted in a manufacturing business right next to a residence. It was right behind the man's house, the, the property owner's house. And they're doing spray paint on, on different vehicles, and there's, they had a spray painting room. And the exhaust was going into this gentleman's backyard. Now, I don't know about you, but I, I wouldn't want my single family home next to a, a business like this and having these chemicals being sprayed into my backyard. And this is what happens when you don't have zoning. And, you know, obviously if this gentleman tried to sell their house... And, you know, obviously if this gentleman tried to sell their house, it's, it's gonna be a less desirable property for someone to, to buy. So this is, this is one example. You know, John brought up the example about the, the fairgrounds. Uh, there's a lot of good things that can come out of it. I'm just gonna do one quick plug. We do have, like, the county's in the process of updating its comprehensive plan as well, and Scriba just did their comprehensive plan. If anyone wants to give good feedback, we have survey flyers on the table. And then also we have a, a public meeting in Hasing on September twenty-fifth, and then September eleventh, in the city of Osceas in Mexico. But yeah, this is a very exciting process, uh, looking forward to seeing how things kinda pan out. But this is all gonna be coming from you, from what you want, uh, this isn't what the county wants, this isn't what, um, you know, the government wants, so I want you to make sure that you understand that this is the grand up process. So, okay. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks, Luke.
Sorry?
With the new PDC requirements that came out this year?
Yeah.
Are you incorporating, uh, any of this?
Give me PDC, the wetlands?
The wetlands, there's a lot of changes coming out.
I mean, it's out. This is not, just to be clear, this is not a wetland delineation or overlay mechanism at all.
Are they, do you, I was just asking, does he take that into consideration when he develops?
So, so I'm not, I'm, I'm, I'm just kinda here for support.
You're just designing a map, okay.
Uh, when, when this map was put together, it was based off of someone assessor, assessed as a tax parcel. They, they gave it a code, and then all I did was I kinda condensed those codes into, I believe it was seven or eight categories, uh, so it's kinda a little bit easier to read. And that's, that's all it was. So, so the PDC wetlands mapping, that's a separate issue that kinda then-
Well, that goes into zoning, that's the reason I brought it up.
So it-
Your development of zoning-
It does, so, so it, it kinda determines where you can, where the buildable area is. So you might have residential property that has a wetland going through it, or you might have an industrial property that has a wetland going through it. It's kind of a, it's, it's parallel, but it's a separate issue, um, and it only kinda comes into play when you're trying to build something or you're putting something new on the property.
Kevin, I got a question.
Yeah.
It's a legal question.
Sure.
Um, is this, if the town board decides after all these things to implement zoning, is this open to a permissive referendum?
It, it is not, uh, again, under New York state law and the town law, it's not subject to a permissive referendum. If, if there's a court decision that, that, that changes that, I'd be happy to share it, but everything I've seen is, uh, states that it is, it's a town board process through the adoption of a local law, uh, that, that would adopt the zoning regulations.
But that local law is not, would not be open to a, a permissive referendum for by signatures on a petition?
Correct. And then, and for those of you who don't know what that process means, I think, you know, it was just touched down, but a referendum, a permissive referendum, if, it's kinda like your elections, if you, you're running for office, you circulate enough signatures and petitions, uh, or you circulate a petition with enough signatures on it, you can put that measure, whatever it is, up for vote, uh, at a special or general election. That process is not available to towns for the adoption of, of zoning regulations. Just wanna be clear, you, you had your hand up for a while.
I just, what governing body regulates this zoning committee or whatever is, wants itself in running for years to come? I'm asking because I don't want a Micron plant next to my house, so that'd be great to stop that. But at the same time, how long before this becomes a thing where you get a list of, these are the colors you can paint your house, and you're not in a commercial area, so you can't sell your vegetables inside of those, I tell you, who prevents those things?
So again, the process starts with the creation of the zoning review commission, which this is the kickoff essentially of that, of that, that group. That group is primarily made up of the town's planning board members, but also additional, uh, town officials. The creation of the zoning review commission was, was an action by the town board, the elected town board officials, there's five members. And before I forget, and I really, I wanna plug this, and I may repeat it a few times, if you have additional questions as we go forward with this process, and again, this is not a one meeting and we're done, thank you very much, I encourage you to participate regularly and often in the process. The town board meets the third Wednesday of every month at six o'clock at the town office, or the town hall. So please show up to those meetings, engage with your, your town board members, they're all accessible, they all have, you know, phone numbers and emails, the, the, four of them are here tonight, uh, you know, really, really show up, lean on them, ask questions, engage, I mean, that's what is going to make this process the best process it can be, right? Whether it happens, whether zoning in any form happens, or, or, you know, we have the, the best example of zoning regulations that, you know, the state has ever seen, right? Whatever it is, we want it to be Scriba's document, not, you know, not borrowed from another town or the city of Oswego, it's unique to Scriba, in what Scriba wants, what Scriba doesn't want, right? So it starts with the town board, I hope that answered your questions. Other questions, all, all the way in the back, and then I think you have them.
You know that first.
Go ahead.
Uh, I have a question for this gentleman, but, um, for you to have it. Can we request that we have a meeting that allows everybody to be there and the chance to get up and speak, uh, and feel about this? I might not think of something that somebody else thinks of at all, and, you know, I just like everybody to hear how everybody else feels.
Yeah, listen, I mean, this is, I, I think this is a great turnout, this is the beginning. I hope the next meeting, the room is, is double i- in, in terms of the people that show up. I counted roughly fifty people tonight, right? The more people that are involved, the better the process is. I, I personally hate it when two or three people show up to a meeting, especially if there's a public hearing. I'd love a room packed with people to, to really, to really understand how people feel, right? So I, I encourage it, I know I speak for the town board, cause they're, they're looking at me and, and they encourage it, they welcome participation. So as I said, this is the first meeting, there's another meeting for Scriba seniors, uh, at, at the Scriba office, the town offices on the fifteenth at one o'clock, and then the eighteenth is another public engagement session most immediately. John and his team have already talked about additional meetings and, and, you know, really starting to put together some, some real examples of what, what zoning and zoning districts could look like. It's vitally important that we have public input on all of this. It's the only way it's gonna be, be really beneficial. You know what, I would, I would, I would challenge you, and I say this respectfully, invite two or three of your friends to the next meeting, say, hey, man, you should come, you know, learn, and if everyone did that here, we'd have a packed room. And to me, that's, that's the best kinda meeting.
Excuse me, Kevin, I just wanna say, on the seniors meeting, I just wanna make it clear from the president of the seniors group, that seniors meeting is specifically for that group, those members, they're having a luncheon, and so that's what it will be addressed, it's not necessarily the public meeting, but these other two are for everyone to join in. These, this particular group, I think they're fifty-five and older, and they're members, this is their club, and there's, and the idea is the room will be filled to capacity, so that's, he was trying to limit it to just their group.
Thanks, Lauren.
Sure.
So earlier in the presentation, John mentioned something about, I guess it had to do with like zoning and the zoning has on schools and stuff, but then you just said you'd like to make it Scriba's documents. What does that mean, like, when, like, when it comes up to making the rules, is it gonna be the master plan, or is it gonna be stuff that pertains to the people in Scriba? Like, you know, maybe we don't want all of the stuff that zoning has to offer, maybe some people want a little leeway on their property, but all of a sudden with the zoning on elsewhere, if we take down the zoning board or wherever, they make the document, here's what it is, but how are you gonna make it Scriba's, uh, document, like, is it gonna be in for them? Like, when you have all these rules, is anybody gonna have a vote on, hey, there's fifty percent of people don't like this one, ninety percent like this one, or how do we weed out the good and the bad?
Yeah, that's a really good question, and it's, 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 there's a bit of a nuance to answer here, and, and so there are certain things related to zoning in New York state in particular that are consistent from one community to the next. For example, granting of variances, a use variance for an area variance. There's legislation and there's court decisions that, that identify the criteria that any planning or zoning board must look at in order to grant a variance, right? And, and a lot of it, I won't, I won't get into all the details, but a lot of it has to do with the character of the community, whether there's a hardship, you know, what, what, how much, how much of a variance you're looking for, things of that nature. Each one of those decisions in the process requires a public meeting and notice to the neighboring property owners within, whether it's five hundred feet or a thousand feet or, you know, in the case of the city of Oswego, because it's so densely populated, it's only a hundred and fifty feet, right? But in a town like this, and the Scriba planning board has, has notice requirements, if anyone's shown up, you know, it's a thousand feet, right? So if you're within a thousand feet of a development that's going through site plan approval, you, you, you get noticed and you're invited to come up and, and speak at a meeting. That's the same process for, same process for zoning applications, whether it's variance, site, uh, special permit, or, you know, we would fold the site plan review process into the zoning, uh, regulations.
I'm gonna jump on that as well, because that, yeah, what Kevin's talking about is very, uh, procedural when it comes to reviewing an application for development and things like that, but on your point about, you know, what makes it a Scriba code, um, going back to the whole spectrum thing, the discussion we had, I had, is that you can do a very, like, general, low-touch zoning code that is very broad in how it, uh, reads. So you can have something that says, this district, um, you know, for, speaking of like agricultural district, so an area that's within an ag district, you'd have an agricultural zoning. The extent of that text in the code for agricultural district could be that agricultural uses are permitted, period. That could be the extent of that. So that would be maybe potentially a Scriba approach, if you will. So you can go from that level of detail to something way more specific, where you're talking about this pole barn has to be twenty-five feet from the road. You know, maybe we don't wanna go that direction, maybe we wanna leave it and say agriculture uses are permitted, period. That can, you take that and you apply that to commercial uses, restaurants, every use you can think of. And, and when we're doing zoning codes, we often have focus groups, we're on a particular issue, so if there's a, a business community, we'll meet with them specifically to talk about their concerns from a business community perspective, make sure that we're hearing their feedback and incorporating their code. Same goes for farmers, same goes for folks who have maybe industrial use.
So when that comes up, that list of things that everyone's gonna have a chance to look at, it's not just gonna be voted on, you know, hey, it's not as comprehensive a list, but here's the list we chose and good luck.
Yeah, yeah, it's, 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 we, so as a consultant, we don't come with, we don't impose a list of uses that need to go through and be permitted, we bring our options, kinda like a menu, à la carte, what you want in the zone, what works for Scriba, what doesn't, that's what we bring. You know, we work with the community to, to sharpen the pencil on what actually they want to see in that particular area.
Right, so how do we get people this rule and other, I mean, you have thirty-one hundred houses, I don't know how many people are in Scriba.
Yeah.
But how do those people get involved and say, hey, man, sixty percent of the public like this rule right here?
Yeah.
But the board says, yeah, we like it.
Yeah.
Sorry, how, how do we get, how do we get involved in that?
I think you cover these meetings, and you, you cover these meetings, you, you write in your comments, you, you, you do what you can to communicate your, your sentiments. You know, I, to, to the board, you know, I'm not the board, I'm not a politician, I don't make any of those decisions, you know, but you, you go to those meetings and you show up and you, and you do just that.
Right, but you're, I mean, I, I get it, I'm not, I'm not arguing with the board, I just wanna get it over there.
Yeah.
Just trying to get it out in the open, then.
Yeah.
So I show up for the meeting, I'm not working that Wednesday, whatever, whatever meeting, so I'm not working, I have a rule to go.
Yeah.
And I go, whatever, say what I want, I just wonder.
Yeah.
Okay, how, how do we get thirty-one hundred houses in Oswego for a Scriba notification to say, hey, man, we all got kids together in this forum, and say, here's the list of zoning stuff-
Yeah.
-that we came up with, and maybe not your list.
Yeah.
They just tweak their list a little.
Yeah.
How do we see that list if we get to a room like this and everybody goes, hey, man, we only have seven, four, and three?
Right.
But we really like three, or seven, five, and nine. You know what I mean? That's what I'm getting at, and I, I understand, I'm not arguing, I'm just, I just wonder.
Engagement-
What about shows up over there?
Consultation is extremely tough, there's, there's no, like, you know, there's no way around that, it is very tough. I can send a survey out to a community of two thousand people and get ten percent of people to respond to that. I can send five reminders and maybe get an additional five percent to respond to that. We can put it, we, and that's like a, a mail out to residents. We can supplement that with posters, social media, newspapers, LED signs if they're available, we can, we can exhaust all those efforts, we can only do so much.
Yeah.
And, and unfortunately, that is like, believe me, I live in that every day, Kay lives in that, Lucas lives in that every day. If we could get, like, this amount of people to every meeting, it would be a lot of a different process. If we get ninety-five percent turnout on a survey, that would be, like, I don't know, I'd be buying my lottery ticket that night for sure.
Well, it's tough, because everything comes in your mail, it's either junk or spam-
Yeah, tell me about it, yeah.
... or painful calls, and you get to the point where you're just numb with-
Yeah.
-and you start saying, well, whatever, whatever.
Yeah.
So I can see that part, because I do it first.
But that, but that's, that's, that's why this process exists, to, to, to get the word out, the public engagement, tell your friends, tell your family, the more people that are involved, the better the process is gonna be. Gentleman has his hands up, I don't know if he still has a question or not, no, you're good, yeah.
Yeah, so I, I think kinda rear, rear area, what he's saying is, I think it's more a point to the board, like, please consider a, a method to communicate to the community, hey, this is what we're working on, here's how we get involved to the community.
The, and I-
Can I answer what you're trying to say? Yeah, yeah, yes.
I, I think the-
Really think about how to do that, so we can be effective and make sure everybody can be involved.
I think the most effective way that the, the, the town can, can push out that information is through their website-
I can tell you, the only reason I'm here, I saw, I saw something on Facebook, and then I went to the website and said, okay, that's the media date, I'm gonna be there. But that's, that's why I'm here, 'cause I saw it on Facebook, but that might not be the best way.
Uh, who, who's here 'cause they saw it on Facebook?
Who's here because they didn't see it out there? Didn't see it nowhere else, but it was in the news.
Who's here from what the town put up?
You know-
But that, I mean, there's a lot of people in the community, there's not very many people here based on their experience.
Well, we, you know, we, we're doing the best we can with the technology that we have, but Heidi, you have a-
I'm wondering, how many people check the town's website regularly to see what's going on down?
What?
You know, it's, as John said, it's a combination of, of, of all things, right? It's, it's word of mouth, it's, it's, it's social media, it's the websites, it's the newspaper articles, it's whatever media that, that we can push out, get the word out. It's you showing up tonight, all fifty plus of you, and then telling your family and friends, hey, there's another meeting, let's show up to that one and let's really tell them how we feel.
I was gonna add one-
It's showing up at the town, I'm sorry, John, it's showing up at the town board meetings every third Wednesday at six o'clock-
Yeah.
-and telling them how they, how it feels. The planning board meets on, on the second Wednesday of every month. Not necessarily dealing with this particular issue, but it's another forum that you could come and get educated about what's going on in Scriba.
And I'll also say that from, like, from experience, I've been doing this a, a fairly long time, and it doesn't matter, and this is just, you know, take this where you will, it doesn't matter how big the community is, what the project is, whether it's zoning, whether it's- whether it's something site-specific, every time, there's gonna be one or two people at the eleventh hour saying, I didn't hear about this, why wasn't I notified? That unfortunately is just, that's just how it goes. I don't have a magic wand, I don't have an eight ball to make sure everyone comes to these things, but we're prepared for that, you know, like, these meetings, we take notes, we, we keep a detailed record of all of the events that we hold and how they're advertised, because the least we can do is show these people and say, here's all the things that we did, and here's how we conveyed all this information, you know, I'm sorry you didn't, you didn't catch it, but now's your time to, to say something. You had your head up for a while, let's start, go to this guy in the back.
Before I ask, I have a few questions for you. I don't have Facebook, but I feel like I have a right to know when this meeting is held. How am I gonna find out?
You, you, you got a, you got a phone and internet access, right? So, I mean, again, describe a website, scribea NY dot org, soon to be dot gov, but that's another story. But, scribea NY dot gov, for the mo, or dot org, for the moment, you know, put it, bookmark it in your, on your, on your phone?
Scribea NY dot org.
Scribea NY dot O R G, yep.
Do you put it on the scrub?
Or, or that's another way to go.
Do we agree that zoning is a system of government control that dictates what property owners can do with their property?
No.
No.
So, it doesn't dictate what I'm allowed to do with my property?
It doesn't dictate what you're allowed to do with your property.
But you can tell me I'm not allowed to do something with my property?
If there's something that you want to pursue to do with your property, then zoning is one, um, is it a piece of that puzzle? Maybe that's a, the right, the right metaphor. Um, you, there's, there's tools and levers to go, like, there's other processes that you can explore using your property for whatever you want. So, just because it's not written in a code, doesn't mean that you can't pursue, uh, talking to the, uh, a, a board about doing whatever you want with your property.
So, do you have to just-
I don't think so, no. I think that-
So, the boards and the commissions, not the owners, decide what's acceptable, right?
Oh, based on-
The boards and the commissions decide what's acceptable and what's not, not the people that own the property.
They make decisions based on planning documents like this.
The board and the commissions?
Yeah, the board and the commissions. Uh, not to a degree, no.
Okay. Um, isn't this already being addressed with targeted ordinances and fair remaining practices at the moment?
I don't know about those.
Well, so there's, there, there are a number of, of, of local laws that Scribe-up has adopted over the years, and again, keeping perspective, uh, the planning board was formulated in nineteen ninety-two, the first regulations, site plan regulations that went into effect in, in nineteen ninety-four. There are subdivision regulations, uh, dealing with the development of, of property, the site plan regulations, there are mobile home park regulations, mobile home regulations, uh, and so, those are all different, isolated, you know, development-related regulations. What zoning does is kind of fold them all into one, uh, comprehensive set of regulations, separate and apart from the comprehensive plan, uh, which John had mentioned. And again, I think it's been mentioned a few times, but the Scribe's comprehensive plan is up to date. It was about twenty years old, and within the last two years, it's been updated. Uh, so, this is a, a, a natural next step, is to look to see if, if, uh, the comprehensive plan can be, uh, or that zoning can be folded into that comprehensive plan. Uh, and, and really, what, I encourage anyone to look at the comprehensive plan as well, because it's just, it's a set of concepts or ideas that, again, the town board, through a process, has identified as, as things that they would like Scribe-up to, to, to be and look like. And, and primarily, it's related to, you know, infrastructure and orderly development, and reducing the amount of, of blight and, and code violations that are, that we see when we drive up and down the roads and the backroads, things of that nature. Will zoning solve all of that? No, but it will start to, to address it, um, in, in a way that seems to make sense. Uh, in terms of government control of, of land, uh, I, I guess, you know, if you wanna look at it that way, that, that is one way of looking at it. I mean, taxes are another way of government control, you don't have a whole lot of, uh, of, of input over, um, but zoning, as I've said a few times, and will be said many, many more times, is unique to the community in what it wants the community to, to look like, um, in the, in the, in the current and in the, in the future. And we can learn from the past, so the, the, the map is not up there, but organically, the, the town, for a town that hasn't had zoning, um, you know, there are zones that have organically been created over the years, right? And so, you know, this is your, the purple is, they're calling it public service, but again, it's the new plants, it's the power lines, you've got industrial over here, where Novellus and Cythar, uh, and then, of course, you know, the yellow is, is, uh, is the, is the residential, the, the lighter shade of yellow, which is somewhat surprising and, and unfortunate, in my opinion, is the agricultural zones, but there, there's only a few agricultural zones anymore left in Scribe-up. But, but that's, that's organic development in Scribe-up. What zoning does is takes that and, and compartmentalizes it a little bit more, and with a set of regulations.
So, so when the government restricts how the land can be used, that reduces the supply for a lot of certain things, which is gonna drive all costs, right, for that, for all properties?
I'm not sure that, that I would make that correlation. What if Scribe-up says, you know what, we wanna be a, a residential bedroom community to, you know, the, the other larger population centers, we wanna attract, um, you know, multiple, multiple housing tracts, right? So, you've identified certain areas where that would occur. Uh, I, you know, then it goes through a process, and the, the surrounding properties are notified of that process, there's public hearings that, that the planning board would hold, and the public's invited to, 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 to provide their input. I mean, this is after, should zoning be, uh, regulations be adopted, there's a, there's an ongoing process that occurs.
I'm just saying, like, if not a lot of farmland is available, then it gets expensive if you wanna purchase farm in here. Yeah, that's just the way it goes.
Yeah, well, uh-
There, there's a couple of things there, though, like, if you're talking about farmland or creating new farmland, and I completely understand the angle you're coming at it from, so like, that's fine, but if we're gonna talk about zoning as a tool to manage land use, and whether, and how that affects the supply and demand of viable development land, like, we're, that's, that's one thing, but there are, again, and I will say this, there's procedures and tools that can be used at the board level to see developments happen that may not align or be permitted through the code.
Let me give you one example that is Micron-related, and whether you, you know, it's, it's probably a mixed bag, that, what I'm about to tell you. In primarily the town of Scruple, but mostly the southern towns, Scruple, West Monroe, even into Palermo, given the size and scope of the Micron development, they are removing hundreds of acres of wetland in order to develop this, these fab sites, chip fab sites. The state's allowing them to do that, but the state has said, to your point, with the D E C and the wetlands, for every wetland you, you remove, you've gotta replace it with two or three acres of wetlands, for every one acre, you gotta replace it with two or three. So now, you know what they're doing? They're coming into Oswego County, they're identifying farmland and, and other wetlands, and they're buying it out, they're, they're coming to the, to the landowners, and again, good for the landowners, but they're, they're saying, we're, we'll pay you twenty thousand dollars per acre for your land, and why would you not agree to that? If you've got a hundred acres, you just became a millionaire, right?
Went by and cleaned your front.
Well, but this is real dollars, right? Here's the, here's the catch.
I'm a grocer, I'm the bought and sold of the last time you're-
I get it, but, but, so this land is being bought up by the Wetland Trust, which is working essentially in concert with Micron, and they're buying up all this grade A farmland, and it's forever undevelopable, it will forever be known as wetland, can never be used again for anything other than being wet. I don't know how you feel about that. I, I, you know, it's all, not one acre of land that I'm aware of in Anadaga County is being purchased for that. They're coming into Oswego County and doing that. Now, would zoning prevent something like that from happening? I don't know. Uh, but, it is an example of either you, you plan or you, you be planned, and, you know, there are, there are other forces at, at, at play with this, with this Micron development, that I don't think you, you, you know, you don't wanna have any control over. So, it's just one example. Um, again, zoning's not gonna solve all the issues, it's, it's, and it's gonna probably create a couple, right, that, that we don't anticipate, but it's, it's a process that, uh, you know, is worth looking into, in my opinion. There, there was, hands up where we're here for longest time.
Would the talks about a nuclear plant come in?
Yeah.
Will, will zoning have, uh, such a bureaucratic, uh, impact on that, that it would make it undesirable?
I, good question, I don't think so. Um, it's, it's a completely different process, although I will share with you, and if you haven't read the, the, the Micron environmental study, uh, if you're having trouble falling asleep some night, you may wanna, you know, start reading it, but I, I did read it, and one of the things that it did say is that Micron's electricity needs, uh, when it's fully built out, will be about a thousand and fifty-six megawatts of electricity, right? What did the governor announce a couple of months ago, that, that she wants to see a nuclear facility of, of at least a thousand megawatts being developed somewhere in upstate New York, right?
And if that's, and, and if that's the case, and they're able to develop, is any of that, uh, no, is anyone out? And will, and where would they, if it is, where would they purchase these two or three acres for?
I, I'm, I'm not aware that there are, like, prohibited, I, I think, I think Constellation has enough land over there to, to, to put another plant up without any issues there. There might be some disturbance, but, um, not as significant as, as the Micron development. And as far as would zoning have a, a negative effect on the development of a new nuclear power plant, I don't believe so, because it's a, there are certain things and processes that, that, that bypass the local zoning and regulations, and it's driven by the state, or in some cases, the federal government, like the N R C, and FERC, and, and the State Public Service Commission, projects that are so big, you've heard probably solar, solar and wind farms, right? Some of those are, are part of a, of a larger process that cuts the, the local community out. Uh, so, I'm not saying that they would do something that, that endangers the community, but the process is somewhat larger than, than, you know, just town zoning.
Because that, that would be, would probably do a little bit, right, of lower scale of what Micron would do, it's gonna break people.
Well, right, and so, here's what a real-world, uh, example could occur, right? We get out ahead of it, I think it's, it's better for the town. From my experience, and there's, there's folks that have more direct experience than I do, but, you know, a lot of the trailer parks that we see now were, were, uh, housing for workers when they were building the nuclear power plants, right? So, what if we had some type of a regulation that went into effect that said, if you wanted to create a, a worker housing area, that, you know, you make it something that's sustainable, and not just a, a bunch of trailers that are gonna rot out after ten or twenty years and look like hell. Maybe you, you create something that's, that's more stable, more, more, uh, has more of a life to it, so that when the work, workers move out, you've got ready-made housing for other folks, maybe, you know, right, not construction workers, but, but day workers and, and outage workers that come in, right? So that, that's one thing that we might be able to look at, as, as we develop zoning and land use regulations for, for Scribe-up. That's unique to Scribe-up, because nobody else in the city, in the, in the state has three, and maybe four nuclear power plants in their backyard. Scribe-up does.
So, um, if, if zoning laws are passed, what prevents them, or how do things get added? If something's said, how do more laws get added, and how do we push for change if we find that something's there that we don't like?
Uh, through the same process that, uh, they're created, it's all created through a local law, again, subject to public hearing, that, this is the, the heaviest push is, is what's happening now. Once a, a zoning regulation is in place, amending that regulation requires local law amendment, a public hearing, and, and a chance to be heard, and, you know, that, that's the process. I could tell you, just from experience, in the city of Oswego, after they did their zoning rewrite, uh, a bunch of things were missed, and so, individual property owners that were zoned in, in, in one particular district, and now they changed the district, and they, they can't add on to their, to their business because they're in the, they're in the wrong zone, even though they were, they're grandfathered for the original, to add on to something, put in addition, they couldn't. So, you know, people would come to the city and say, hey, or their alderman, hey, you know, I, I think you redrew the line, or you drew me out of my own, my own business, what can we do? The, the, the city responded to that and said, okay, yeah, we can adjust that line, we didn't mean to, 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 you know, uh, damage you, so we, you know, we'll move the line. Uh, there's, there's other things that come up. I mean, ten years ago, right, we didn't, we didn't know what solar farms were, um, maybe just ten years ago, but I guarantee you, twenty years ago, nobody had any notion about solar farms. And so, that's another change that, that, you know, you, you adopt, and, and you, you put into, uh, into your code. So, that, I, I don't know if that answered the question, but it's, it's a, it's a constant upgrading and, and looking at the process and, and making those changes, petitioning the, the, the town board to say, hey, I wanna, you know, we think that this change should be made.
So, more additional regulations can't be added without public hearings?
Correct, that's correct, yep.
I wanted to just say one thing, that's all our previous people that are involved with the planning board and with the, everything else, that are rolling over their grave, because they fought for Scribe-up not to ever have that zoning, and this is a total, zoning is not in all of our grandparents' and fathers' vocabulary. They fought every day for us not to have this, and I'm very, I can't believe that any of our members now would go for it, because you're turning your, your family that brought you people up, you're turning down people down. They're rolling over their grave.
Well, I, I, I certainly respect your opinion, I completely disagree with it, but I do respect your opinion.
So, uh, you brought up the example of the D E C wetlands, you know, and I, you know, we commented earlier about the site plan, site review plan being a little bit out of date, the comprehensive plan is up to date, but just updated the site review process, it's a little out of date. Is it a great consideration to change that process? You know, because this, um, zoning process isn't gonna happen overnight, so if we have specific concerns, for example, the D E C wetland- We have specific concerns for example, the D E C wetland. Is there something being enacted now in the current comprehensive plan to say, hey, if we're going to change the property from residential to wetland or from agricultural to wetland, that needs to go through some process to be approved by the town Strybo before that happens? So is there other avenues being considered versus zoning?
Yes. Again, going back to that spectrum, the lower touch level would be an update to the site review law or revision, whatever, to kind of bring it more in conformity with the comprehensive plan. So that's an option. Yes.
Is that being considered?
Actually, it's, yeah, it's been done. I mean, the site plan regulations were revised within the last two years, right around the same time that the comprehensive plan was revised. And the site plan regulations have been revised over the last 30-plus years, I think at least three or four times, right? As things change, as we learn from experience, we have applications come in and something has, you know, fallen through the cracks or there's been a loophole, we try to address that, right? And so, yeah, I mean, it's, to your point over here, these documents are designed to be, you know, living, breathing, adjustable, flexible documents. And it really has to be because, you know, society changes, technology changes, and zoning has to keep up with all of that.
I guess the more pointed question then is, you know, that example to D E C, it sounds like it's a concern based on Micron. Is there something that, that concern in particular, are we doing something about that concern right now because this process is going to take months to a year or whatever? And is there other concerns with Micron in particular that the town board is concerned about? Maybe we should be asking that.
Well, so, yeah, I mean, that's a great question, and some of it has to do with state law versus local law, right? And so the D E C controls its state law and regulations. And so they rewrote all of the wetland regulations, went into effect January 1st, and, you know, where properties on a map weren't wet on December 31st, they show up as wet on January 1st. So that's part of the process that we have to maneuver, we as a town, as the planning board now, even with site plan regulations. We have to be cognizant of that. Can we change it? Not necessarily. We can work with a developer in trying to cite the project on the property in a way that is consistent with those regulations. But, you know, some of that is out of our control because the state's established wetland delineations and being so many feet outside of designated wetland area.
It doesn't sound like zoning can solve that issue.
Zoning can't solve the issue, but it can, again, work in concert with some of those state laws. And those laws are in place. I've heard that, you know, it's not unique, again, to Oswego County or the town of Strybo, but all over the state, people are having issues with these wetland regulations. And, you know, everybody's listening, and there may be some changes coming to modify what went into effect at the beginning of this year.
With all the solar firms coming in and getting that purple line going forward, yeah, you're right, 20 years ago, we didn't hear of it. Now, we're on the commodity. Is there any way running a couple of extension cords off of that purple line to give us some power reasonable and charge the energy? Solar panels come in, we've got some of the power here, because it feels like right now, you know, he was $23 worth of electricity and it cost me $182 to get it. It's kind of a little skewed. And why don't we, like, for the water, why don't we get, we're on the commodity, we're pumping it everywhere. We should get a little better rate here. Like, we should be literally free on the water or giving it downstate or whatever. The power, maybe a couple hundred inch cords or something, maybe something. You know what I mean? The solar panels coming in going forward, you're right, something that isn't 30% of the power has to stay within a 100 mile radius or something? You know, the benefit from, some of us like the benefit from it, right?
Yeah, no, and there have been programs established over the years. When Fitzpatrick was owned by Entergy, there was a, they allotted so many kilowatt hours of electricity for development purposes. Now, again, that benefits developments, then, you know, you can make the argument by extension it helps the community, but, you know, it doesn't lower your utility bill, right? And that's what you're really talking about.
Well, a lot of hand, the ratio, 23 to 182 was counted as a steep ratio. Fifty-fifty, I'd feel better about.
It's, no, I do. Unfortunately, it's not an issue we're going to solve with zoning or tonight. But I will tell you, and this is one thing that we might be able to incorporate into zoning regulations. Seen it more regularly now with the solar and wind developments, the nuclear power plant and any other new energy primarily infrastructure that comes in. There's a concept called host community benefits, right? And so for the privilege, in some cases, the detriment of hosting some type of industry or business, the developer pays the community a host fee, right? Separate apart from their taxes, separate apart from sharing any money with the county, separate apart from a pilot payment, the community, the host community actually receives the benefit of something, right? Whether it's, and I've read a bunch of them, whether it's a new fire truck for the volunteer fire department, or it's, you know, a sum of money over, as a lump sum or over a period of time, the local municipality gets that to utilize and spend for either a particular purpose, for park playgrounds or building improvements, or to give it back to the taxpayers in the form of a reduction in taxes. Now, we're not talking millions of dollars here in every average development, but you get a solar farm that's producing five megawatts, and you tack on a host community benefit of $2,000 or $3,000 per megawatt per year for the life of the project, which is usually 20 or 25 years, with a 2% increase every year, now you're talking hundreds of thousands of dollars that stays in the town Strybo, for instance. So that's something that zoning could, you know, incorporate into those regulations.
I understand it's got to go somewhere. We just don't see it. It'll be, we know it's in there somewhere, but it would be nice if it showed someplace where we're all paying the majority, you know? Like, it's great with your new fire truck, obviously, that's for everybody. You know, stuff like that. But, you know, it seems like the crisis on the power is going somewhere else, and I know we're all hurting that, but there's only so much money a guy can make or a girl or whatever, there's only so much you can make, and you get forced into positions where it's like, okay, you've got to suffer a lot of waves. Just saying, a couple extension cords probably help out. A lot.
Duly noted. Other questions?
So Kevin, the answer to my question is, we're not going to get to vote, per se, on zoning. The only vote we get is who we put on the town board.
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. There's not a special election or general election where on the ballot it says, do you want zoning in Strybo? There's no, nothing like that.
You can cover your voice here to the town board.
Question over here.
Can there be a vote that says we want to move forward with this investigation? Because I'll caution everybody in here, once a regulation, once a bureaucratic process goes into place, you've heard all these people tell us already, there's no way to remove it, and you're going to jump through your butthole to try to revise it. And it's only going to be because the town board allows you to revise it, all right? I've been through the planning process in this town. It was very effective. It worked very well. I own a business. They had to talk to, or they sent letters out to people within the thousand foot radius. Those people wrote letters, they participated in the process, and it worked well. If it ain't broke, don't fix it, all right?
I was confused. My thought, not to say I had, no, we had zoning already. Coming to this meeting, now I'm enlightened that it's not called zoning, it's the site plan review. So I'm still not confused. We already have zoning. In my eyes, we have zoning already. And it's always effective.
We have a process that works. The planning board, they do a very good job and very thoroughly.
Kevin, is it semantics are we talking, or can you enlighten us about the difference?
Yeah, I, you know, I'm going to lean on John a little bit here, too. But the way I generally describe it, difference between site plan regulations and zoning regulations, site plan regulations can't tell you where to build. You can build your development right next to your neighbor, right? Site plan regulations regulate how you can put that development on your property in terms of egress, ingress, traffic control, size. There is some setback requirements that the site plan has in place, 20 feet, you know, from your neighbor's property, things of that nature. If you're a commercial business, a funding or residential business, it's got to be 35 feet and so on, right? So we probably have regulations that walk right up to the line of zoning without actual zoning regulations. What zoning does is create districts or zones that identify particular uses that are most, I guess, harmonious with that particular neighborhood. And the way, if you ever looked at, you know, if you drive through a community and know that they have a pretty effective zoning code, if you're really looking for it. If you're driving into a community, if you think about it, drive into a community, what's the first thing you see? You see, like, car dealerships and big box stores and restaurants and things of that nature. And then as you get, you know, deeper into the interior of the community, you start seeing those neighborhoods and parks and things of that, too. That's zoning, right? That's a, just an orderly development of a community. We've done pretty well up to date, you know, without zoning specifically. But it's a question, you still have a situation, we, the planning board and the town board has been faced with it, where you have a, you know, a crematorium proposed right next to a residential development, right? Those were really contentious public hearings.
Shame on the planning board for allowing that to happen.
Sorry?
Shame on the planning board for allowing that to happen.
How could they?
They didn't fix that.
Listen, I don't want to argue with you, but I will, I will, I will say, how can the, the planning board had no control over it because there was no regulation in the town that said that you could not have a crematorium next to a residence. What zoning could do is to regulate that, is to isolate and identify what areas you can have more offensive activity versus, you know, something else. So, and again, zoning's not going to solve every problem, but there is some, you know, some order to what, how a municipality develops their properties. John, I don't know if you know.
I think you know the head of it. The crematorium is a great example, because as I was saying, and to other questions about the right of a land owner to do whatever they want with their own property, I think it's a great example. You know, is a crematorium a great use in the middle of a residential neighborhood? Probably not, because it's a little noxious, could be offensive. So there's that to think about. And a zoning framework, again, I'm not here to sell, I want to make very clearly, I'm not here to sell zoning, I'm talking about what it is and how it may help. Make that crystal clear. It's also, the site plan review law is a bit more reactive, where a zoning law is a more proactive. Kind of takes a greater approach, is a little more future minded, if you will.
And let me just, let me just say, you know, John said, you know, hired consultant by the town board. The town board's made it very clear at virtually every meeting when this topic has come up, that they have not agreed to adopt zoning regulations. What they've agreed to do is start the process and engage the public, which starts with this meeting and the other meetings and the more that are going to be planned. So, again, let's be clear, this is not a foregone conclusion. We don't, there's not even a document to review. This is literally the kickoff meeting for this whole process. Question back here.
Yeah, I mean, I heard about this lately, but I looked into it as much as I could. And I know for a fact that when you adopt zoning, it raises property, or raises the cost of the property. And I get that for the town Strybo, my crowd, and all these people coming, that they can make good money from that, those people who live here in this town. I've been raising kids in this town for over 20 years, and I like this town, like the way it is. And I want them to live here, too, as of right now. But I want them to be able to afford, you know? And I want our older retired people to be able to afford a hundred and fifty bucks. I don't want everybody's property values shoot up so they can't afford this. You know? And if they're worth more, we're getting taxed, so we can give us tax cuts. But, I mean, if we break even at best, I just, I mean, I get the town to make money off of it. People don't want to come here, because this is a nice place. This, I mean, I want this place to be affordable. Nothing is already crazy. You know?
It's probably going to come here, but if, wouldn't there be any kind of ruling that says, if it's going to come here? Is there any possibility of saying, let's put a timeframe on it, like, six years, we convene back here, and if it's not working out, is there a way to say, okay, this wasn't working?
Talking about zoning?
Yeah, so, what's the possibility? Is there some sort of thing you can put in there that, if there's any law that says you can't reconvene, like, put a timeline on it, like, okay, we're going to rebusness in six years, if this doesn't work out for everybody, let's abolish it.
Again, to the point that was made about, I'm sorry, Dan, go ahead.
This is, this is more, if it's not. As soon as the town board got their resolution, their board goes away. It's allowed. So it's nothing that we're going to shrug down your throat, it's something that could take a long time to come. I'm not, kind of, I'll play some people, um, games. My paper gonna be? So, uh, it's good.
Yeah, so what Dan's referring to is the zoning review commission, right? It's a separate, and John explained it at the beginning of the process, a separately constituted group to start the zoning review process. Doesn't mean that it leads to zoning, it means that it starts the process of looking at zoning from a community perspective. Once, should the town adopt some form of zoning regulations, that zoning commission goes away, the planning board continues to exist, there would be a zoning board of appeals that handles like variances and other appeals that you might have. What do you mean you can't, what do you mean you telling me I can't do what I want to do on my property? I got somebody who wants to buy the property and turn it into whatever. You can appeal that decision to the zoning board of appeals. So that process. I guess that's, so, well, to answer your question, is there a way to just say, you know what, we gave it a good run for six years, but it's not working for Strybo? To heck with it, let's repeal it. Legally, absolutely, it can be done. The same way it's adopted, it can be reviewed, it can be ended with a repeal by local law, public hearing, all the rest of it. It's a town board function at that point. Town board function to adopt it, it's a town board function to repeal it. And that's the truth, that's the same with any local law.
Yeah, I mean, you knew there was an hour. You know what I mean?
I know that, you know, we kind of allotted for two hours from 6:00 to 8:00 for this, and certainly, you're welcome. Thank you for all attending. We're going to hang out for a little bit longer, just if you have any individual questions, happy to answer them. But thank you.